You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the October 11th, 2022 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a team and nurture the bonds of our community for the betterment of our students. Amen. I would also like to welcome Board Member Calvert Hayes online and Board Member Mott Singer online. Board Member Calvert Hayes is under some doctor's orders and she is not able to attend in person, but we are glad to see her virtually. And Board Member Mott Singer has a health issue as well, so we are glad to see you virtually. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next order of business is our student performance. We have the wonderful Concert Choir from West Forsyth, and I'd like to recognize Jacob Cook, who is the awesome choir director of West Forsyth, and Kevin Spanhour, who is the awesome principal of West Forsyth.
Hello, good evening. We are the West Forsyth High School Concert Choir. Today, we will be performing Earth Song by Frank T. Kelly.
Thank you. That was awesome. Thank you. That was so great. Thank you. You too. Oh, gosh. That was wonderful. Just, oh, have I ever said that I love being here? Because I do. For students like this, it's so great. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. Andrew Kraft will recognize the Haynes Band, which was selected to perform at the North Carolina Music Educators Convention. Mary Kate Bowman-Choat is the band director of Haynes Magnet Middle School, and Robin Willard, the principal of Haynes Magnet Middle School. And they will come to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Distinguished Board, Madam Chair, and Superintendent McManus. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Mary Catherine Bowman-Choat, band director at Haynes Magnet School. The Haynes Magnet School Band has a reputation of musical excellence across the state and boasts numerous superior ratings at contests and competitions, as well as record-high numbers of students who place in audition-based honors ensembles. This year, the Haynes Magnet School 8th Grade Advanced Concert Band was selected to perform at the North Carolina Music Educators Association Professional Development Conference, which is held here in Winston-Salem. Bands are selected to perform by a panel of retired music educators through a blind-listening process of the band's performance recordings. Most years, only about three bands across the state are selected to perform for the conference. So not only is this a great honor to be selected to perform, but Haynes Magnet School is the only middle school band in the state of North Carolina to be selected to perform this year. And she is supported here tonight by her principal, Ms. Robin Willard. The band's performance will be at the Benton Convention Center on November 8th at 9:00 a.m. The performance is open to the public, so please help me in giving a warm round of applause for Mrs. Choat and the students in the Haynes Magnet School band program.
And next, Andrew Kraft will recognize the Carolina Classic Fair Art Contestant winners. First, we have Gibson Elementary, Sue Bruce is the art teacher, and then Brunson Elementary, Cindy Saunders, and then Jefferson Middle, Kelly Vincent. But last but not least, West Forsyth High with the art teachers Nathan Newsom and Elizabeth Thetson and Annalise Edwards.
Thank you. And just to give a little bit of context, every fall, our schools participate in an art exhibition at the Carolina Classic Fair. Each school has first, second, and third-place winners selected by a panel of judges, and there are approximately 600 student ribbons awarded. The overall art competition at the fair is judged by school art displays, and this is called the Judges' Choice Award. The Judges' Choice Award is given to two elementary schools, one middle school and one high school, for their overall display, and each of those schools receive $200 to purchase art supplies. And again, this year's winners, Gibson Elementary, Sue Bruce, art teacher, Brunson Elementary, Cindy Sanders, Jefferson Middle, Kelly Vincent, and West Forsyth High School, Nathan Newsom. We recognize these teachers on behalf of their schools and their students. We don't have any students with us, do we? Because we definitely want to recognize them, but I just wanted to check and make sure. So let's give these teachers a warm round of applause as well.
Thank you so much for bringing art to the children. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. The instructions for this section were on the sheet as you signed up. The most important rule to remember is that we ask you to be kind and respectful and know that we cannot talk about sensitive or private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Thank you. Our speaker tonight is Sally Hirsch.
Good evening, Superintendent McManus and Ms. Kaplan and Board. Sally Hirsch, 1831, Brantley Street. I think I have to give my address. I forget. I'm here to speak for the Coalition on Equity in Public Education, who couldn't be here tonight, but I'm part of the coalition. And I'm here to speak on the Education Collaborative, which we just found out about yesterday, the four or five members of us. So we're wondering what it is. I've looked at your attachments and everything, and we'd like to know more about it because we weren't included in any community discussions. If you had some, it's said in the timeline that you did have some over the summer. But, you know, I don't want to be against anybody raising funds for the schools. That's really important, and we need to go forward with that. But I am concerned about the process of how it's going forward and how you're including community members. So I guess I'll hear more about it tonight. And it did say in your mission that you would have one board member as part of the board for this foundation that you're starting. And so I'm wondering if that's equitable, because one board doesn't really have a range of equity. One person from the board doesn't really give a range of equity, so I'm concerned about that and also how you will be looking at the programs. I've been looking at some of the older programs that have gone through the schools, and one in particular, it's wonderful that you have developed all of these preschools. I used to be preschool dance teacher, preschools, and getting kids to school early. But I read in the four steps going forward that you'll be analyzing how effective these programs are. And it seems to me that you should be analyzing along the way how effective programs are. That's just a suggestion to you, because I guess it's just more transparency, and the public would like to have as much transparency as possible. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is the Superintendent's Update. All right, so I just wanted, last night was our jamboree, our marching band jamboree, and just wanted to give a shout out to all, we had over 500 students participating last night, and every school that participated did their show as they usually do. And we just have the most talented musicians in our district. I mean, you heard our vocal musicians tonight, but last night, same thing. The shows were incredible. And just a great night. Our middle schoolers joined, from our different middle school band programs, joined for one of the numbers at the end. But again, our students are just amazing, and it was a great night. October is a very busy month that celebrates so many things in education. So I'm always worried that we're going to leave something out, but I think we've maybe captured all the things that we're celebrating right now this month. But you can look on the screen. We gave a shout out to National Principals Month, but it's also National Physical Therapy Month. We have our physical therapists that work with our students. We have a custodian. This is our month that we celebrate custodians. Red Ribbon Week is this month, School Bus Safety Week, National Bullet Prevention, Down Syndrome Awareness Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Fire Prevention Week is during the month of October. So it is a very busy month in the educational space and in our classrooms across the district. So thank you to everyone. And then just one last reminder of October 31st, just to make sure. That is the day that is a workday for our teachers. The end of the quarter was the Friday prior to that. I think this is a Monday, and so that day is still a day where students are off. It is an end-of-quarter workday for teachers. And then also that day, we're hosting an Employee Benefits Health Fair at the Career Center during the day. I think it starts at 1:00. It says it on the slide. It's at 1:00 till 6:00. So employees can visit some vendors to learn more about the different healthcare opportunities or healthcare options we have in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. So thank you. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is discussion items. First is a resolution of support for the Education Collaborative presented by Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Executive Director of Strategy and Innovation.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Calvert Hayes, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. The goal for tonight is just an overview about the Education Collaborative. And I heard from the comments, this is just in the discussion phase, and a lot of the conversation is about how do we look at the district getting additional funding support and thinking about continued programs. So I'll speak to that as an overview. So traditionally, the school district has had continued collaboration with local foundations, such as the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation, the KBR Foundation, and the Winston-Salem Foundation as ongoing support for programs and services aligned to our district's strategic initiatives. Most recently, from 2015 to June of 2016, Peer Project was supported by the Winston-Salem Foundation for Educator Professional Development and a multi-year investment in our educators for those years over the lifespan of the project. And then with Project Impact, looking at K through third, pre-K through third, improved outcomes, looking at third grade, our 90 by 25 goal. We've had lots of momentum around that goal, but a continued push for support and investment in our educators and students over time. And most recently, of course, we've talked a lot about our elementary and secondary emergency relief funds being invested in the district, over $200 million, which those funds are set to expire in fall of 2024. Knowing this is the landscape, one of the things we need to look ahead to now is how do we create sustainable funding partnerships to help fund continued programs that are supporting the district? I know there's been a huge focus on additional coaching supports to give teachers daily support related to instructional implementation, as well as thinking about social-emotional learning, et cetera. And so as we look over the next couple of years, it's going to be critical to see how do we begin to think about replacing that funding once our SIR funding expires? So the community has always been very committed to funding and support in our district. A lot of that's been around thinking about the needs as leadership has conversations, the community, about the needs of the community, and how do we fund and support those. We want to create that sustainable pipeline, and many other districts have already established this infrastructure. So one of the things that we worked on this summer, and I want to give a shout out to my colleague Victoria Fulton, who's been along on this initial journey as we've started some of the background research for this educational collaborative and thinking about foundation configurations, especially in North Carolina, and how they operate. And so what you see here are some examples of various foundations in North Carolina. And if you click on the link towards the bottom, what you notice is we've compiled some examples of their operational structures, about average, how much they use in operations, if they're a 501(c)(3), how they collaborate with the district, as some kind of background context related to us thinking about this for our district, in support of our district. And one of the things that we've had just the great fortune of is that we've had foundational support. We also know, as we think about the aftermath, COVID and organizational priorities, education has always been a critical support, but direct support for each of our strategic goals might not always be aligned to those organization missions. And so thinking about how do we do that, the state of North Carolina has used the North Carolina Public Forum to begin to think about providing technical supports to districts as they think about launching foundations as a more sustainable resource in support and collaboration to help fund initiatives in districts. So what is the vision? And as I talk about this vision, this is the base thinking about what it could be. Ultimately, as this 501(c)(3) is established, it will be the determination of the board what that will actually look like. And so this is just proposed in thinking about the research from several foundations in North Carolina, what they've given us in feedback and what has been helpful, and the role and operation in some of those foundations in the districts of what we consider. And so again, this will be finalized based on whatever that board decides for this collaborative. But it will be a separate entity from the district as a recommendation. Because the school district will be the most critical beneficiary, we want to make sure that the school board has a voice on at least a key member, along with the superintendent being highly involved. But of course, lots of community members and leadership will be key members of that board, and they will comprise the totality of this board as it is in its development. So timeline, and I will note just some key pieces previously and then moving forward. So as we think about the initial pieces that we kind of started from, a lot of the initial segue work was a byproduct of Project Impact ending. So we know that was a critical funding support resource for the district, and with its end, how do we consider thinking about a long-range plan? It had an expiration date, and everything that we've had as large investments in our district have always had an ending date. And then we're looking for funding as that funding has ended. And we want to get ourselves out of that cycle and be more proactive in thinking about support for our district. And then how do we consider long range, our community having a voice with how we support the district and priorities? And I'll give you a good example, and I'll talk a little bit about one of the foundations. Durham Public Schools Foundation, again, is a separate 501(c)(3). They work hand-in-hand with the district, but they are focusing a lot on social-emotional support for public school students and have created an initiative and funding support to provide that additional support for the district directly. And so many of the initiatives by the foundation have been fueled directly by the community in concert with the district as a support. So as we launched and ended Project Impact, we had several listening sessions from both funders of the initiative, community members, parents, families, principals, school leadership. A small sample group was selected as focus groups to give feedback. And some of the key findings about what do we do different as this ends is thinking about sustainable resources for support. And so a lot of this educational collaborative conversation came as a result of that. So moving ahead, we thought it was critical, and also because we've had some initial conversation with some foundations about funding, they want to know the school board is in support of this, right? If they're going to move forward and think about seed funding and support, they want to know the superintendent is in support along with the school board. And so we thought that was a real critical next step, because then that allows us to leverage more conversations with the community in addition to thinking about the board configuration. What does that configuration look like, starting the 501(c)(3) application? And then establishing what does the actual infrastructure look like for the collaborative? And it could be called something else. We just needed a way to not call it a foundation, because foundations, most people just think it's about money, but this is not about money. This is about how do we critically invest in our community's children for change? And that is a relationship that is both conversational, and it is also about getting broad support for resources as well. In addition to that, the superintendent has provided a letter of support of the desire to want to move forward with this. And then we've had some conversations about some consulting support as that 501(c)(3) is established. And so eventually, within the next year, we'll have to think about a staffing model and the structure for the foundation as we, all along the way, get community support along with the district collaboration. So these are critical next steps, but what questions do you have?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
So right now, who, so first of all, I want to say I have kind of been talking, like, I think this is, you know, I love this. I think that some questions around, right now, who, you know, is the person who's been leading this kind of prep work? So I see on the timeline, you have things started in July. Have you been doing that?
Me along with Victoria.
Okay. And so I think, you know, the thing I just want to make sure of is, as sort of we're having the conversation about the board kind of supporting this, I agree, and I think wholeheartedly that we need to do this. I think what is important, though, is that we make sure that we're very clear, I think, about it. What I have some hesitancy about is the structure pieces are going to be conversations that are had later down the road, sort of after we've provided our support for it. But it's extremely important that we be very clear about the initiative's connection to the district and alignment with its goals, because I think that one of the things that this can do is create, you know, have an entity that is in lockstep with us about what it is that we value, where it is that we're headed, which I think sometimes has not necessarily been the case. I think people have a lot of different solutions. There's a lot of resources in the community, but I don't know if, you know, everybody has sort of have been on the same boat along the lines of agreeing with which direction to go in. But I think that that has to be extremely important. So could you kind of talk about that piece?
So because of that point exactly, we have a lot of leadership transitions in our community. So whether that has been the superintendent or whether that has been executive leadership in our district. And one of the challenges of those transitions has always been institutional memory, and how do we continue to move things forward? And quite frankly, Project Impact was a great example of that, right? So one of the huge impetus of this is to think about if we have a unit that helps to hold that institutional memory together, does it matter if we have turnover in key leadership positions? We still have a connected body that helps us move forward. And I think that's one of the critical layers in our community that has been a challenge. And I think this will, working side by side, and one of the things that I love is the superintendent is working directly with us. We've had conversations with various board members about this being important, and I think the next step is... And I think the next step is community, additional, you know, engagement with funders as well as what does this look like in our community that will help to leverage that buy-in collectively to continue to make this a sustainable and consistent initiative that supports our school and is viable and valued. We don't want to create something that becomes another thing. We need it to be connected with the district. We need the district to be a critical partner, to have a voice, and we also need the community to stand right alongside with that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Board member.
So, I'm going to kind of continue Alex's question because it is a concern. As far as the number of people who would serve on this board, what percentage of them would be employed by the school district or a board member? Because I think that's what's critical to keeping it aligned. Because we've seen with plenty of organizations over time, the foundations going to the right and the organizations going to the left or vice versa. And it's problematic. It can, I definitely feel like we need to make sure the numbers are such that this foundation doesn't become another hurdle for the school district to get the funding that it needs, that we're in lockstep. And they know that if the school district is saying this is what we want, it's not somebody who's constantly will prove it to us or questioning that because then I don't think it's as helpful as we think it's going to be.
Board member Parker?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to ask a question or you want? Okay. I completely agree. One of the things that I will say Asheville City Schools, as their foundation, has a great design. So, they have a portion, of course, that there's the superintendent and a leader from their cabinet as an ex officio on the board. They have students on the board. They also have a sect of community donors. Then, they also have a section of employees, principals, teachers. So, their meetings, they do them two ways. They have one after school that is their base board meeting that includes students. It includes staff members. And then, they have like quarterly updates that might be during the day. And I think the time of day is going to be really critically important for that level of engagement, but I completely agree with you.
Well, I'm really excited. I've said for years that this school district needed a foundation. I mean, the small school district that I grew up in in East Tennessee's had one forever and they do amazing things for that school district. And I guess one reason I feel that we need, that we need something like this is that a long time ago, in the dark ages, whenever technology in the classroom was a new idea, we had to go to the community and raise $3 million to put technology in classrooms. And, you know, some of you sitting here remember that initiative and it, you know, every time, like Project Impact's another perfect example, that it's like we have to do this capital campaign that churches do to raise money for things that the school district needs or that needs to be ongoing and not be always in flux. And so, I just, I'm excited about this idea. I like, you know, I think these are good questions about how we keep that, make sure that we are in lockstep with each other and that we don't, you know, go out in different areas. But I just think that this community has risen to the occasion every time that something's needed for our schools. And I think this will be a perfect way to allow our community to be involved again in a way that makes, can make our school system even greater than it is. So, I'm just really excited about it because I just see the amazing things that the small district that I grew up in has done. It is, you know, so I'm excited. Thank you for taking this project on.
Board member James?
Yes, thank you. So, I couldn't think of two people who are more qualified to lead the work that you're already doing. Thank you, Paula, and thank you, Victoria, for trying to pull all this together. I know that's not easy even for the things you've already done. Just like the other board members, I'm excited. We definitely need this. And one of the things I would say as you're continuing to put this plan together is we definitely want to make sure that it's a relationship thing, but we don't want to let it get pushed aside. That we also want checks written for the foundation, whatever we end up calling it. So, that's an important part for the community as well. And I would just say, as you're continuing this plan and definitely I won't be sitting here and weighing in, but it's for all. I would just be very mindful to strategically place community members from all over Forsyth County so that it really truly gets a buy-in from the entire group and it doesn't just seem to be something that we would think about in just the city limits of Winston-Salem. I think it'll be a lot more buy-in that way and at the end of the day, more money to, again, be a pipeline to help meet the needs for the superintendent and the board and staff as you see fit. So, I think it's great and thank you for all the work you've already done, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board member?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I guess, add my two cents to what has already been said by the board members that I think this is a game changer for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to authentically partner with our community to move our district forward in a very meaningful way. I think that the work that a foundational kind of thing can do would definitely help us to sometimes navigate that political space when we have to go to county commissioners and all of that, when you have your own sense of resources coming in that's directly tied to the benefit of the school district, then there's nothing political about that. That's why we, you know, decided to come together to support public schools. So, I just really appreciate the leadership of our superintendent, Tricia McManus, and of course, Dr. Wilkins and the rest of the staff to turn this big old ship around. And I always tell people that school districts are like, you know, ships in the ocean, not a speedboat. So, give us a minute to turn it, to get going in the direction we need to be in. So, I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, it is very exciting. Thank you so much. Next is the Magnet and Choice Update and Timeline by Dr. Karen Roseborough, Chief of Choice Magnet Schools.
Dr. Roseborough, before you start, can I say something really quickly just to set it up for you? No, I just wanted to take a minute before she started so I don't forget at the end that this is Dr. Roseborough's last meeting with us. She is starting, and I'm going to say the district correctly this time, Dr. Roseborough. She is starting as a superintendent of Terrell. Did I say it right this time? I said it the other day Tyrell and she never corrected me. Terrell. What's the last part? Is it not county? Terrell County School District. And you start next, in the next couple of weeks?
Start Monday.
Start Monday. So, congratulations on that, Karen, and thank you for all you've done for Winston-Salem Forsyth County.
Now, you're going to make me cry and I'm trying to.
I should have done it at the end.
But I'm glad that you did it now because I do have some packing to do. But I wanted to make sure that I came in and shared the information with you all about our upcoming school choice timeline. But I do want to say thank you to everyone that's been part of my educational journey here in Winston-Salem Forsyth County because I would not be where I am today without all of you. So, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. To board chair, Kaplan, board members and superintendent McManus, this is your Choice and Magnet School update. In terms of our Magnet School programming, we have been off to a great start in July and August. We created some strategic partnerships for each of our pathways. We have the North Carolina A-plus Schools. We reestablished a relationship with them. The Arts Council has been an active participant and partner with our Arts Magnet Schools as well as Andy Craft. And our STEM and STEAM schools, we have Forsyth Tech North Carolina STEM Alliance that's going to be supporting our STEM and STEAM pathway. And our STEM and STEAM schools are identifying what's going to be their areas of expertise. So, there will be some de-aliation between those schools, which I know was a concern of yours. So, we are going to go ahead and move forward with that and Project Lead the Way is also supporting those efforts. And then, our IB and dual-language schools will continue to be supported by the International Baccalaureate Organization as well as the Hispanic League. In August and September, we established a strong collaboration with our advanced learning team in the district as well as with our new IB principals. They have all been retrained, so we're doing a reset with IB for our IB schools and making sure all of our new leaders are well-trained in the foundation and the principals of IB. And we also have collaborated with CTE Director Kim Forbes to make sure that we are well-aligned with workforce development needs of the city of Winston-Salem as well as our new CTE plan. For September and October, Magnet Schools America was back for phase two on strategic implementation of everything within the pathways as well as we provided some support to our, what we call college and career magnets, which would be like your early college, the downtown school, as well as some of our other magnet schools that are not in the pathways. We have provided additional support to them and resources in terms of their marketing needs. And for September through November, we are having our quarterly meetings. We've had our first one so far where we've provided the principals with an update. Our Magnet School coordinators, who are now full-time in the pathway, are doing a very good job of leading the efforts and they are actually working together as a collaborative team if they're within a pathway. If they are not within a pathway, we've had individual meetings with those Magnet School coordinators. And then, for our school choice update, for August and November, we have been working with the Bridges Collaborative. That's a continuing effort that we have here in the district. We've been looking at how our housing impacts segregation within our schools. So, we have joined the Urban Institute for Housing Matters to examine neighborhood segregation. And that has been a really good partnership with other districts across the country. We're continuing to give more ideas about ways that we can create equitable school choice within our district. And then, we have collaborated with our EC, Early Learning and Human Resources and Operations Team on streamlining our timeline in terms of how we go about choice, staffing allocation, enrollment treatments and our program needs. And finally, we have really done a really good job of piloting our new software system for school choice. Scribbles, again, has met the needs of the district. They've tailored their product to meet our complex needs. We will not have choice cards. However, every child is going to go home with an infographic card about now's the time to make a choice. It will say that in plain language so all families will know that it's now time for choice. There will be a QR code on the card and they will be able to go directly to the application on the website and register for the family dashboard. This is a copy of the 10 steps that families will go through to set up their family dashboard to make their choices. Again, it's not first come, first served. We talked about that before. The window opens and closes for all around the same time. And then, we do a random lottery in terms of making sure that families have space available. We will continue with our preferences of sibling preference and employee preference. This is our timeline for the upcoming year. 11/19, the window will open at the time of the school showcase and then it will close on 1/13. So, that will give the families at least an additional week or two after the holiday break to get their choices in in case they forget. We will continue to do our kindergarten period in the spring, starting in March. And if you notice on the timeline, the out-of-zone period is shortened, is from 1/23 to 1/31. And if schools, if we do have space available in schools after the choice period occurs, we'll do the second chance again like we did last year. We didn't include that on this timeline. That's only if space is available and the Office of Choice and Magnet feels that it's needed because we didn't have enough participation during the choice period. We've provided you with the link to our webpage where the FAQ is there. So, if families should have questions, please make sure that they refer to our webpage or call our office directly. The office also has a candidly link where families can schedule one-on-one time with staff to answer questions about school choice. And this is part of us running more efficiently and effectively for families. So, we do encourage those families to click on that link if they can't get anyone in our office to schedule a time to meet with staff. Are there any questions?
Okay, board member.
I don't have, well, I don't think I have any questions, but I do have a request. Of course, like other board members who will roll off the board in December, I think initially, this board attempted to move this district forward with choice so that it truly empowers parents and students to make choices that benefit them and also to utilize choice as a way to provide diverse schools. I think that the community is still wondering if we're moving in the direction of diversifying our schools. Where do we stand in diversifying our schools with the use of choice? I don't think choice is going to be the answer to diversify our schools. I think that we need to look at the segregation of neighborhoods. That's just a reality. But I do think public schools can play a role in the diversification of our communities when we have diverse schools. And if we think strategically around how to utilize whatever assets we have like choice, we move forward. So, I say that to say that we had a choice committee through this school board and with community members. I think that the community is kind of trying to figure out what is going on with that committee. And what I would tell the committee is that that was just through the tenure of, you know, my leadership as the chair. And I think the superintendent decided with staff how we would move forward to try to progress that idea. And what I would just kind of propose to the school district is that we give the community, you know, a sort of a report card grade since the SHOT Foundation kind of gave North Carolina one in 2018. They said we were an F state around choice. And I'm not sure, you know, what that meant specifically for Forsyth County. I would just assume that meant we were not an A school district for choice. So, I would just request that this school district helps the community to understand where do we fit in with our choice program for families as it relates to diversifying our schools.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
So, I do have a question, but first I want to take the liberty of just saying I'm going to miss you tremendously. I think that you have done just an amazing job and that sort of leads me to my question, which is about, I think you've done an excellent job, you know, with choice. And I see Frank over there and he's been an excellent part of your team. But, you know, I'd like to know, you know, what, how are we not going to lose the momentum, right? Because you've done all of these things. We're using new software. We have all this planning. What, and that might not be a question for you because you won't be here, but what are we doing so that we are not losing this momentum relative to choice would be my question?
So, that's why, that's why we have a team. That's why we empower the folks around us so when one person leaves, it doesn't all fall apart. That's what I'm guessing your answer would be, Karen, right? Dr. Roseborough?
I think Frank and the Office of Choice and Magnet, I think we've learned a lot collectively, especially from Homon, who kind of guided us along the way. And I think that the momentum of the work is going to continue. Frank has been actively involved in the Bridges Collaborative work alongside Dr. McMillan, who will have that historical background knowledge of where we were and where we're headed. So, I think it's going to be something to, for people to watch and learn from in terms of WSFCs and how we've evolved. of WSFCs and how we've evolved choice, which people are very intrigued about what we're going to do here. And I think we can do some really good things collectively with our local community. I think that's why the, being a part of the Urban Institute for Housing is going to be imperative for us as a city going forward.
Okay, board member Parker?
And I assume that you will still really put a targeted emphasis on our kindergarten students and our sixth grade students making choices so that we have a plan to promote and do that because, and so I just want to make sure that we do that so we, it won't be me this year, but whatever board members don't get, get tons of calls going, I didn't know I was supposed to register my child. So anyway.
I'm glad you mentioned that because we do have a plan to do a series of webinars, especially promoting it to kindergarten and our rising sixth graders as well as the rising ninth graders. So we'll make sure that all of the community, our goal is to inundate the families now with information about choice, whether it be something tangible that's in their hands as well as electronically. So we're going to be doing both.
Great. So they'll have that, we will, the board members will have no reason to say, hey, it's been out there. So that's good, that's great. And also I just want to say I'm going to miss you too. I think I've, I feel like I've watched you since you were in your preschool years. I remember doing a school visit as when you were just taking an assistant principal role, your first one. And the principal looked at me and she said, watch that girl right there, she's going to go places. So you're going. So we're going to hate, hate that you're going from us, but good luck and thanks for all you've done. Appreciate it.
I appreciate you, Ms. Parker, for being a part of my journey. Seriously, I mean, yes, you were there from the very beginning, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Board member Jones?
I think the plan for choice in magnet schools is great and great, I think that you took, you and the department took the feedback from, you know, having something in their hands, all those types of things and have incorporated that in. Glad the software's working out well. And I just want to tell you, it's been great working with you. I've met you as a parent when you were at Cash Elementary School as an assistant principal and have really seen you grow and seen your family grow and just love you all and wish you the very best.
Thank you. Thank you, board member Jones. Thank you, everyone. Signing off.
Yes. And thank you also, Dr. Roseborough. I've gotten to know you these past four years and it's just been such a pleasure and you're going to be missed, but I'm so excited for you and your next journey.
And I enjoy working alongside of you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the Resolution of Support for Education Collaborative. This is from our discussion items of our main board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay. No opposed, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the facility upgrades at Hall Woodward. That is from our recent VNG committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move. Oh, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. I got you. Board member Mott Singer?
She said yes.
Oh, okay, and yes. All right, that is unanimous. Last action item, consider approval of the 2022 year-end budget transfer and adjustments. Do I have a motion?
No approval.
A second?
No approval.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, no opposed, that is unanimous. Okay, thank you. Next is our announcements. Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. So before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on just about anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching this. We'll conclude our broadcast.